All my blue cards collected. It looks like everybody's settled in, so we're gonna head and get this meeting started. I'm gonna start with an invocation, and Victoria, would you lead us on that?
Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight to guide us and to lead us in our city council meeting to have you be with us as we make decisions that are weighty for our city. Let you be our guide, and let us hear the right decisions for all of the people of our, of this great city, and we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Now, I'd please ask you to stand and remove your covers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and we're gonna go through roll call. Joel?
I am here.
Awesome. How you feeling tonight?
Good.
Good. You look good. You look good. Indra?
Here.
Rick?
Here.
Kathleen?
I'm here.
Eric?
Here.
Rob?
Here.
Victoria?
Here.
I myself am here. So, it looks like we got a full house, and we will proceed. First on the agenda item here is we have transitioned over some new council members, and we have a current vice president from the last council, which is Rick Riker, and we need to figure out what we need to do going forward to elect a president. So, I'm gonna open the floor to any nominations for president.
I move to elect Victoria Marshall president of the council.
Okay. Anyone else?
I second it.
Okay. All right. We're good to go. Okay, so I would also like to nominate to have Rick continue as vice president. If anybody opposes that, then, all right, then let's, I guess, if nobody else is contesting, then do you wanna go ahead and just do an official vote? How about, let's just do a thumbs up on that. Councilor King?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Um, yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
Okay, so we will be going forward with Victoria as our council president, and Rick Riker will serve as our council vice president. These people will be able to take over the duties of mayor when I am not available to run meetings, and we will, they will actually join me in agenda-setting meetings to actually set our agendas for workshops and further council meetings. All right, so, item number one of the business is council action. We have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Salinger Construction Group, Inc., for Phase Two service relating to replacement of the water treatment plant project number WA 6207. And I will turn the microphone over to Jason.
Thank you, Mayor and council, and that is Slayden Construction, Inc.
There you go.
They would get mad at me if I didn't get that correct. Before I get started, I do wanna take a moment and introduce four guests that we have in the audience for you today. Far down on the list here is Dick Tally. He is our owner's representative. Many, several of you have seen him many times before. He's been working with us since the very beginning on this project. Next to him is Wayne Gresh, who several of you have seen also before, primarily on our wastewater side, but he is with Corolo, who is the design engineers working for our design builder, Slayden. In the middle is our onsite supervisor, which is Bill Hawkins. If you choose to adopt this resolution tonight, he will be our onsite inspector through the duration of the project and serve a very crucial role for us. And last, but certainly not least, is Mr. Stephen Flett, who heads up the design-build team for Slayden Constructors. It is a tremendous team. We've got a great project for you, and with that, I am gonna launch into a presentation. And tonight's subject and summary is to consider the guaranteed maximum price, or GMP, as I'm gonna call it throughout the rest of the presentation, which would initiate construction of the replacement water treatment plant beginning summer of 2025. I put in your packet, and it is up there for you. I'm not gonna read through all of these dates, but this project has been actively engaged since 2017, when council took action to hire Standtec Consulting Services as our owner's representative. Since then, we've been before the council with many, many decisions, all the way up to the most recent, which is with Slayden and Phase One D, which was the membrane system selection or purchase. So, a little background, following months of work related to the design and technology selection, 30% design was delivered to the city of Grants Pass in drawings and specifications. And after a very, very extensive review, it was determined and required by many of our funding sources that a complex value engineering session was going to need to be held. That value engineering session was held April 6th and 7th of 2023, and it was to really look at the project with fresh eyes and in a way that we could improve the project efficiency, make it more cost-effective, but without really degrading the overall performance of the treatment plant. The value engineering session was held by multiple city staff, our owner's rep, two engineering firms, independent engineering firms not related to the project at all, and all of those folks combined to provide a wealth of suggestions on how we can improve the project and make it more cost-effective. The target, the initial 30% price was at $117 million, was to get that $117 million reduced to $82.5 million. We were able to make very, quite a few strategic reductions without compromising the ability of staff to effectively operate and expand the plant in the future. However, we did end up short. We were able initially, we think, to reduce about 12.6. When we further developed all of those value engineering options, we were able to realize $14.6 million in savings through that process. That reduced our base price down to $102 million, 123, and we'll talk about why that difference is, including all the brick and intake costs. So, moving forward, that was the really big push, was that 30. We've moved past 60% design. We've received those. We have provided comments. Those comments have been incorporated. The design was greatly streamlined. Instead of having a campus layout, we moved everything into a single building, reducing our overall building costs, but it is very compact. But what's really important is that it is fully redundant for today's flows, and with a couple of very small upgrades, will be fully redundant at 22.5 million gallons per day capacity, which was the original goal. And I'm not gonna dwell on these. They are in your packet to look at a little bit more, but what you can tell from this is what we have created is a very compact and efficient layout that really does meet the needs of the community today. Look at the control room and the future lab space. So, 90% documents have come in. They've been reviewed, and all of the comments have been incorporated. The plans have been submitted to the Oregon Health Authority Drinking Water Program, who's who regulates drinking water in Oregon with authority from the EPA, and conditional approval has been granted, which allows construction to move forward. And it's important to note, because conditional approval sounds kinda like a hinky term, but what they do is they grant you approval to build it. Final approval comes after construction, and the plant has proved out to meet all of its targets. So, what is next? We have plans that are ready to go. We're ready to start. So, it is consideration or and potential adoption of the guaranteed maximum price, or the GMP, as well as execution of several smaller contracts to facilitate the project. Two of those are on your consent agenda tonight, and that is for installation of temporary and permanent power through PP&amp;L. Another one will be coming to you at a future meeting, and that is for construction oversight, inspection services, special inspections. But again, that'll come at a future, future meeting, and we'll talk about it a little bit more detail. And then to secure the final pieces of funding, and that is really the grants that we are working on, which, when we get into the financing piece, I have some news there, and the final loans, which are act as what we call our gap funding. So, we have funding identified. When the final price is, we know that we'll have to get a loan that's somewhere in this range. Well, that'll be our final gap funding, and that will close up the project. And then to complete the final design of the intake structure modifications and the associated, smaller GMP that'll be associated with that. As you recall, the brick or the building resilient infrastructure and communities grant had some very specific items that had to be met for the intake structure to be compliant with that grant. We've been working through with Oregon Emergency Management and FEMA on what that is. We now know what those conditions are, so we're able to work that design forward now. And then break ground and start construction, which is really what we're hopeful to get started tonight. So, temporary power, installation of temporary power is gonna be critical. The contractor is going to need it to build this facility, but it's going to take a very large power service, because they also need to use it during the testing phases of some of the early plant processes. The installation of temporary power will cost us $57,177, and the, of course, the cost of electricity for the duration of the project. Permanent power is a little bit more complex. Drinking water processing is incredibly power-intensive. The utility, which is Pacific Power, will have to make multiple infrastructure improvements before they can get power to this site. Even though there is power all around the area, the amount of power required to reliably operate the treatment plant is not available right there. So, they have to make some improvements at their existing substations for us to be able to get adequate power at the site. They anticipate... ...seven, actually. So, that's why execution of this agreement is so important, so that we can get them started. Total cost of Pacific Power for those improvements is just over $6.7 million. Our share of those improvements is just over $409,000, of which our out-of-pocket expenses are zero. So, if any of you have put in power at your house, how Pacific Power often does that, is they look at your revenue that you're gonna generate for them over the course of the life of the project, and they go, oh, your cost would have been this, but because we're gonna earn that back, you don't have to pay for that upfront. They do write in a new rate schedule for us, though, and what that would be is 80% the charge of service plus $4,914, or 100% of the monthly charge of service, whichever is greater. Now, what that means is our average bill currently is about $23,000 a month, so we will always be probably at the cost of power, and they range actually between $19,000 and over $36,000 per month just for power. So, it is rather significant. Services during construction is one that we will consider at a later meeting, and this we would be executing with our owner's representative, Standtec, and this is to provide continuous onsite construction observation and oversight, reviews of all of the submittals. So, when we do projects, we have to receive submittals on all of the items that get included, and that from pumps, wire, conduit, you name it, there's a submittal for it. And on a project of this scale, there will be hundreds, if not thousands, of submittals for the companies to review. The city definitely needs expert help with that. They will also be providing and coordinating special inspections, so a lot of the inspections is done by the building department, but there's a lot of inspections that they don't do related to concrete and other anchors, pulling on anchors for seismic and such. Change order management, pay request review and verification. Our pay requests, when we get going on this project, the bills will be coming in. They will be upwards of potentially $2 to $3 million per month. It's gonna take a lot to be reviewing some of those as the construction is moving along. And then also helping us with grant compliance. That's the other thing that's really important with these large and many grants, is making sure that we are reporting correctly to each grant agency who wants that information differently. It's gonna be a challenge for our team. So, let's get down to the brass tacks, the GMP. The benefits of approving the GMP today is we know what the pricing is. It is likely as low as it's going to get, and if we do not lock this pricing in today, it's likely that we'll have to rebid it in the future, and that price is going to increase. At least one vendor has informed the design-build team that there's been an increase already in the projects that they expect, or the products that they expect. Drawbacks do include, we have not 100% secured the brick funding, but I showed at the last presentation, and I believe that most of you were there, we still can afford the project. It just stretches our utility just a little bit more. We are very certain, and OEM has assured us, the brick grant will be awarded. We got news today. I was gonna save this for the financing part, but it actually gives me goosebumps even when I start to think about it. They have accepted our EHP plan, and our EHP is Environmental and Historic Preservation Plan. What that means, no demolition of the historic buildings. Our environmental is in compliance, and that was the last big hurdle to getting the grant approved. So, that was approved today, and we're pretty actually ecstatic about that news. So, we're hopeful that they're gonna have it awarded. We were hoping for the 20th, but it looks like it's gonna be a little bit later than that, and we're hoping that we don't lose all of our FEMA employees to the fires in Southern California, because we did lose them for a while to the hurricanes. So, great news there. That money is likely secured. So, we do have a cost. The GMP that we're asking for approval tonight is $99,446,571, which brings the total project cost at this joint to $113,753,000 and some change. Slayden did conduct bidding, open bidding, in July and August of 2024. The bid close dates were actually extended into September, and this was to hopefully facilitate getting more bids submitted. Many bids packages were structured to attract local bidders. However, very few did, local bidders did submit proposals, unfortunately. And again, the cost for design and construction is that $113 million. So, examples of outreach, we did multiple advance notices in the local paper that the bid opportunity was coming, and that was in the local papers, on our website, and as well as in the Daily Journal of Commerce, which is where most contractors go to get bid announcements. The solicitation then was advertised on July 15th in all of those same locations, and then the project was broken apart into 58 discrete bid packages. So, quite a few different packages for them to collect and collate and examine and make sure that they were in compliance. And then the design-build team did directly solicit approximately 330 individual subcontractors to get pricing on those 58 packages. So, despite that outreach, we did get very few local contractors, but there were a few. And then also, just in general, the bids were far and few between. Electrical, a single bid was received from an electrical firm for the project, and the bid was quite a bit in excess of what we would have anticipated. The commercial building package was estimated at about $1.2 million, and there only one bid was received for $2.3 million. The pre-stress tank, which we thought would come in at about $2.8 million, was $3.8, so quite a bit over. And we're gonna talk about some root causes a little bit. The pre-engineered metal building, which we thought was gonna be around $1.45, did come in at 2. We know that this is a good price, because that was one of the items we received, two bids, and they were $15,000 difference between the two, so we know that that is really the market pricing. There's several root causes, we believe, including that a lot of our pricing was developed during the project. This project has been dragging on for quite a few years, and there's been multiple price increases in that timeframe, so that by the time we got the pricing, budgetary pricing from them at pre-design, by the time we actually got to design, the costs had increased. Southern Oregon is an expensive market to bring your workers to. So, if you're not living here, you're paying per diem for out-of-town workers. That greatly increases the cost of the project to be able to compensate them. And then material escalation during the project, so all of these bidders, they're bidding a project here in 2023 for work that they may not be performing until 2026 or 2027, and so they're gonna build some escalation into their bids to be able to cover that, and that, we think, is a little bit higher than what we anticipated. However, the design-build team has not ever stopped working with the bidders to realize some savings, working with them to change some materials, to change maybe somehow the work is performed, and they did realize an additional $1.6 million in savings through that. So, again, the project cost is the $113.7 million. Of that, $14.3 million has already been awarded by council, and that is for multiple, that is for the design work, the pre-designed work, and the purchase of the membrane filtration system. It does not include some additional costs. We anticipate that the onsite services for the owner's rep is going to be approximately $3.5 million, and we are also anticipating about $15 to $20 million in additional costs for the intake structure work, including the design and the construction. And additionally, we would hope to allocate a little bit more owner's contingency. Currently, we're carrying about $1.2 million, which was left over from one of our value engineering items within the project. That money just kinda stayed in there. We would hope to allocate at least 5% more to be able to account for something unforeseen during the project. 1% contingency is not enough for a project of this magnitude. So, the project costs, we did have them looked at at an off-site workshop. Bill and Slayden sat down and went through line by line. Bill independently verified through Standtec's database, as well as a program called Root Mean Squares, which is how most engineers evaluate project costs. Standtec's findings do indicate that the GMP is representative of market conditions. It is fair and reasonable, and they do recommend that council consider it for adoption. And again, adoption of that GMP will lock in our pricing, so we know what the costs are going to be. So, the big question is, can we afford it, right? That's really what it boils down to. Staff has continued to work with our financing partners, Business Oregon, and I'm gonna say her name out loud, Toni Bean. If you haven't met her, with Business Oregon, is amazing. Working with her, she has found us dollar after dollar after dollar, and even though they've been small loans, you know, $3 million, $2 million, $750,000, they've all been at 1% interest. That's really been a godsend for this project. They have been amazing at finding us resources, and they have another, I wanna say it's right at $7 million for us, which we'll be going for in April. That also will be at 1% interest. And so, those 1% loans have been amazing for keeping our debt down for this project. And then also working with Oregon Emergency Management and FEMA, which is the primary driver. That's the $50 million grant for the program. So, the current strategy is comprised of 11 distinct loans, grants, rate revenues, and system development charges. And again, we're still actively seeking additional below-market interest financing. And as I talk, we already spilled beans on the brick, but Phase One has been confirmed by OEM, and the last hurdle was overcome today with the EHP approval. And the waving of the demolition, which gives us time to figure out what to do with that beautiful building there on the river. So, this is the picture of our financing. We have identified over $140 million in financing, and our project costs will top out below that, even accounting on the upper end of the intake structure, that $20 million. Of that, $60 million is grant funds, which is amazing, and $49 million of that is loans. $35 million of that will be at market rate loans. All the rest of that is below-market rate loans that we have received through Business Oregon. The team has done an amazing job, and as I said, Toni Bean, calling her out specifically, has been amazing at helping us to identify money to make this project affordable for our community. So, looking forward, this is a long-term debt program. This is the biggest project the city of Grants Pass has ever undertaken financially. Our debt service payment will peak at just over $3 million and settle in at about $2.5 million for the duration of the debt service window, which is gonna take us all the way out to 2059, nearly 2060, so a 30-year debt offering. It's important to note, the council adopted, when they adopted the rate structure to support the plant construction, they implemented the treatment plant replacement fee. The treatment plant replacement fee was designed to cover our debt service, and we hit it pretty close. It brings in about $2.25 million per year. So, almost all of the debt service is covered by that treatment plant replacement fee. The rest will be covered by our rate revenue, allowing us to continue to sell, have a pretty strong capital program investing in the rest of the water system, even while we're paying off debt for the water plant. So, were you to approve this tonight, what does that mean? Well, if we would be issuing a notice to proceed to Slayden in February of '24, breaking ground in late spring or early summer of 2025, construction activities would then commence basically through 2025 through the winter of '27. I mean, it's a pretty long construction window. Commissioning and startup would begin in the winter of 2027 and run through spring of '28. There's quite a bit when we're commissioning a brand-new plant, to bring each little individual system online, test it, make sure it performs correctly. The plant would then be started up and tested operationally in 2028 in the spring. The city would then take over the plant and operate in what we would call recycle. So, essentially, we're going to treat water in a circle, to where we learn how all of those systems work, and we know how the plant functions. Then, May of '28, we're gonna open the valve and put that water out to the system, or that would be the goal. And then, performance testing would then carry on for the next year to ensure that the treatment plant meets all of the goals and the criteria that were set out in the design-build agreement. So, we do tentatively have this scheduled for your consideration tonight. It can be deferred at your discretion. The alternatives are there, and at this time, I would take any of your questions, and I also have a great design-build team here to answer all the tough questions.
Thank you, Jason. Does anybody on council have a question? And I'm gonna start with Joel.
So, you know, I'm really familiar with water treatment contracts. No, I'm not. So, I have a couple dumb questions. On the packet you handed out, the packet we have, on page five, there's, and you're gonna have to refresh my memory on this, there's Amendment Three and Amendment Two, both which were modified, which increased the cost by about $12 million, which was about a 200% increase over what it was originally estimated at. Can you remind me why we had the need for those modifications? What happened there?
Yeah, so, what that was, if, I don't have the names of each one of those. I do, actually. I do, actually. I'm backing up, because I just remembered that they're right here. Way back here. So Amendment, those amendments, so Amendment 2 and 3 were Phases 1B, 1C, and 1D. So 1C was actually detailed design. So we signed a contract which did all of the preliminary design work and helped us through technology selection. So at that time, we'd actually didn't know what treatment plant we were building. We hadn't decided that we were building a membrane filtration plant. And so that was handled under 1A and 1B. And then 1B was membrane, we modified for membrane procurement, that added the 206,000. The complete design of the treatment plant was 1C, which added the 5.7 million, and then the 7.1 was actually the purchase of the membrane system. So as you recall, we had to decide what membrane system we were purchasing for the design to be completed around. And so we actually signed an agreement with H2O Innovations for a system to be able to lock that down for the design team to design the plant around it.
So then, if I understand that table, the original contract amount, original contract value was 1.2 million.
Yep.
And then Amendment 2 added 5.7, and then Amendment 3 added 7.1, and those were needed items that weren't considered in the original contract amount. Is that what I understand?
That is absolutely correct.
Okay. Now, I had one more question, but if somebody else wants to ask a question in between? No?
Proceed.
Okay, on page 6. So they talk about general conditions and compensation. One of the things I don't understand, which is one of many things, but under Item 5, "The parties may elect to use the guaranteed maximum price form of compensation."
Yep.
"May elect to use it." A form of compensation, a stipulated sum form of compensation, or a cost reimbursable form of compensation with a fixed fee for the contract price for the Phase 2 services. Could you put that in sixth-grade language?
I can, and that's a great question, Counselor King.
Okay.
So what that means is, the GMP, if we were to go to a fixed-price GMP, we can go two ways. Right now, we're currently doing, I think, the second one, where we're going to be getting all of their receipts, and we're going to be looking at everything, but we're going to kind of run to a, the GMP, we would simplify that, and then we don't have to see every invoice that the contractor bought, and we don't have to review every purchase. And so it becomes, we pay for bulk things, like here, we paid for the earthwork, and then we paid for the tank, and then we paid for this, but we don't have to review every invoice and every purchase. But we do have the legal authority to write the contract either way. So it just gives us the opportunity to have way more detail of every purchase. But as you can imagine, on a project of this scale, that would, we would need to staff up to be able to do it the second way.
Sure. Okay, my last question.
Yep.
And they're limited by the amount of time you review this, because you could ask questions all day long. On insurance, it has maximum deductible for all risks, all-risk perils, is $25,000 except flood and earthquake, which shall be $50,000 for low-hazard exposure. So that deductible, I assume that's the city's deductible and the contractor's needs to fix the rest of it, or what is that?
I'm going to ask Steve Flett to jump in a little bit on this. This one got really complicated towards the end there. Maybe you could answer, but these are the contractors' deductibles, essentially, if I'm
So it's a contractor deductible?
Yeah, but we're paying for that insurance coverage as part of the contract. It just goes with that. Steve, do you want to?
The contract is written, as you see there, in the $25,000 except flood and earthquake should be 50, so that's basically what the insurance coverage we're to provide that keeps our deductible low. But when you go out and get insurance, that, those low deductibles aren't commercially available. And if you were to get it, you'd have to buy up a policy, and it'd be very expensive, and we put that in our cost to the city as part of our GMP. So we said, you know, let's get a reasonable coverage that's commercially available with reasonable deductibles, which you can see range from $50,000 to $250,000, which is what Sladen had to pay into the deductible to get coverage, you know, the money back. So it actually worked out, the city's advantage to get its, you know, coverage for the project and us and the city. Higher deductibles, but a lot less cost for premiums.
So in the reason for the, where you talked about where the high flood, low flood, what Sladen was able to work through with their insurance is, we're carrying a different insurance at the old treatment plant site than we are at the new treatment plant site, because there is no flood risk at the new treatment plant site, and that saved us, I want to say it was almost $300,000?
Yeah, yeah. When we kind of separated, able to separate those contracts into eyes of insurance, we were able to lower our deductible, our coverage amount.
So then, provide some detail for me here, because I really don't know what I'm talking about. So an earthquake happens two years from now in the middle of construction. This insurance covers it, and then the company has to cover the deductible. Is that correct?
We, yes, Sladen needed to cover the deductible. It is compensable through our contingency, which is part of our GMP. So technically, we can use the GMP. We have contingency for different events and things that happen that are unforeseen, and that, one of those uses is to pay for the deductible.
Okay, and assuming that the cost is less than the contingency. Okay, so let's say the plant's completed then, and an earthquake hits. No insurance, it's all on the city?
Yeah, well, we'll be carrying insurance on it.
We'll be carrying insurance.
Absolutely.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Anybody else have any questions? Victoria, and then Kathleen.
Mine's really just a comment that I, too, was so happy to hear that the historic building will be saved, so thank you for working so hard to make that happen.
Thank you. Go ahead, Kathleen.
So I just had a little detail here on the timeline. It says, "Issue notice to proceed." Should that be February 2025?
Probably.
Okay, okay. I just want to be clear. We're doing that now.
Yes. No, we're going to go back and issue it a year ago. Sorry. Still getting used to the new year. Thank you. In Jason's defense, he's been on this project for a long time. Anybody else have any questions?
2013.
Not really familiar with the contracting side of the house and all the, this is all new to me, obviously, but I had a question as far as in terms of if the contractor, if they pay, or if they spend so much and there's a save, there's a cost savings there. I think that was covered already, but if there's a cost savings, what happens to that money?
So that's one of the things. In general, they can bill for the contracted amount. If it is, comes in way under, there is an opportunity that you could execute an agreement that they would split those cost savings. If that's something you're interested in, we could definitely have that conversation, because we still have several more contractual pieces yet, those smaller contracts yet to go.
No, I'm just, thank you for answering my question.
Yeah. Perfect. Anybody else have any questions? All righty. Thank you very much for your time. So now we're going to have a period here. We can open it up for any public comment specific to this topic. If anybody wants to address us with any support for this or anything objecting to this, please stand at the podium. You have two minutes. And please be specific to this topic, because we are on one topic.
Granted. My name is Brenda Sisson. I'm a county. My question is, what is the total water source? Is it the river, or are you introducing some of the septic, like the fluids or anything like that, being that it's membrane? I've heard of membrane plants before, Southern California for one, I think it was, that they actually incorporated some of the liquids from the city, trying to be polite here, and that was just kind of like, oh, my God. So, yeah, so that's my question.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any comments, either for this or in opposition? Thank you. Please state your name, and then let's try to keep the topic, please.
Catherine, Hamilton County. With so many things, they get started, and therefore, this amount right now, we're looking at a 30-year loan, and the state wants us to build how many houses locally in the next year, in the next two years? They want housing. We want housing. We need housing. What's the capacity of this, just for now, or like five years, 10 years? That's just going through my brain here, even though I'm on septic, so.
Good evening. My name's Ruth Daly. I live in Grants Pass, and I am in total support of getting this water treatment plant built. Water is one of our most important things that we need for a municipality, so let's go for it.
Thank you.
Holly Morton from the county. Question, I know the governor has just created a mandate that any project that has any grant money involved has to use union labor. Does that affect this project in any way?
All right. Is there anybody else that, from the public, that wants to speak? And seeing none, I'll bring them back to the council. We can entertain a motion at this time. Joel?
Could we have some, a little discussion for you?
Sure thing.
So it's my understanding that the full source of water is the river, and it's mine, so that central part was through the water treatment plant, and that, you see, it's planned for future growth, and it's asked for today's population.
Did you hear what I said?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, my wife always says she hears what I say. So, okay, so it's planned for future growth, not just today's population. And the third question, at this point in time, I didn't write it down.
Right. You have the memo.
Oh, the membranes?
If you're taking in grants, do you have to have union labor?
And I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, is there any other discussion on topic at hand? Indra?
Are we allowed to ask about that, the union labor bit? Can I ask that question? Thank you.
So in my quick reading of that rule, and it is a very, very new rule, and they haven't formalized all the items around it, because we're so far underway, that would not apply to our project.
Just a general follow-up question. In projects and other projects as well, for non-skilled labor jobs, do we try and bring as many in from our community as possible?
Like for local, smaller projects, it's almost always local contractors doing our work around here. We have a really great group of local contractors. I might think I might have missed your point, huh?
Even for larger projects, do they sometimes use local workers
Oh, yeah.
From our community?
I believe so.
And we try to do the best that we can to get that? Thank you.
Yeah, we actually had a local contractor in plan for this project to try and get as much of those dollars to stay in this community, because we recognize paying local workers, that money gets spent back here much, you know, it brings much more vitality to the economy. It just didn't work out on this project. Thank you, Jason. Is there any more discussion? Rick?
I'd like to make a motion. I move to adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Sladen Construction Group for Phase 2 services relating to the replacement of the water treatment plant.
Thank you, Rick. Do we have a second?
I second it.
All right, jump to the table. I think I heard Victoria first. Sorry, Kathleen. So we got a second from Victoria. Go around the table. Joel?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
As unanimous, resolution pass. Yes, go right ahead.
I just want to, I just want to comment. I want to thank our design-build group and our consultants for this project that's been years in the coming, but I really need to give a special shout-out to Jason. This is an amazing project for him. It is an extremely important project for Jason. If you don't know his history, he started out here. He's been here for 20, almost 30 years, and the majority of it was as the water treatment plant supervisor. This is a project that was extremely close and near and dear to his heart. He's put everything into this, and I know he's worked multiple hours all the time on this, trying to get this accomplished. His tenacity and his leadership has got us to where we are today, has been able to put us through to where we get the brick grant, and we would not have had this project happen without Jason. So Jason, I want to thank you.
Sorry. So we have some appointments to deal with tonight. First is Committee for Public Art. And you would be a really bright blue, I already wrote color in, it's kind of blinding.
Astrobright.
Astrobright is what I was just told. Okay, so these are committee meeting for, I mean, the Committee for the Public Art. We have two openings on this committee. We have three candidates that have gone through the application process and interview process. As listed in alphabetical order, we have Colleen Milligan, and we have Crystal Pyrean. Sorry if I butcher your names, I apologize. Eva Shaw. So at this moment in time, if everybody would mark on their paper and pass it down. Thank you. Please sign the bottom. And if you guys give us patience here, we'll go through this real quickly. and Crystal. So I'll leave it to council. Do we have a motion to appoint the two in favor?
I make the motion to appoint.
Colleen and Crystal? Do we have a second? Rick, seconds. Go through a vote. Joel?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Rob has stepped out for a second. Victoria?
Yes.
Okay. Looks like we have two new appointees to the Public Arts Committee, Colleen and Crystal. Thank you. Okay, so we do have one more committee, the Budget Committee. We have, currently, we have two openings. We went through interview process. We have three candidates here, and we were just recently informed that there is another opening coming up, so we do have three openings available. So at this point, you, tonight, you can appoint two candidates, because we've already interviewed the three underneath the guidance that there was two openings, but there is a third opening, so you can, at this point, you can really, we could actually appoint the third one now, or we could put it out for, have another application process very quickly to give opportunity for that third appointment. Comment on that? Nicholas?
It's my understanding in the past precedent that when we have had an opening on the Budget Committee, that we like to have three candidates for each one position. So in this case, we have three candidates for two positions. So can you speak to that, Erin?
You're correct. In, in the three, three large committees that are required by state law, like the Budget Committee
law, like the Budget Committee, the Historical Building Sites Commission, and our Planning Commission, we primarily try to, as an internal practice, have at least three candidates for one position. That doesn't always happen, but that has been a past practice for those three committees and commissions. The other advisory committees, we don't hold as strong to that, but we have reopened multiple times before for those three committees to get additional candidates.
Victoria?
I would prefer to open it up again and to, so that anybody else who is interested could come and we could have, open it up to get three other candidates.
Absolutely. So at this point, it looks like we do have favoritism to, you have your, keep with your two openings tonight and appoint that, that, and then we can open it up for the third appointment a little bit later.
I would like to make a motion that we select one candidate tonight for one position and then following precedent because then we'll only have two, two candidates for the following and none for the third. So I would like to open it up to get more available candidates for two open positions. And I make a motion, I would like to move that we, we may choose one candidate tonight for one position.
Okay, so we got a motion on the table to actually only appoint one candidate out of the three applicants we have tonight to reopen it up for another application process. With doing that, I was informed that we are on a kind of a timeline here, so we will have to make this very speedy and quick for this next round of application and interviews, just so you guys are aware of that. Rob?
Yes.
We get a second, we got a second from Eric.
Yeah.
Rob, you have a comment?
So I just want to make the point that while what Indra says is correct, the, we'll say the backside of that, or the, the price to pay, we'll say, is that often many of these committees and sometimes even the commissions can't make a quorum without a certain number of people. And the bottom line is if we, I will guarantee you that if we hold fast to that rule on every committee and every commission, waiting for three to get one, there will be many times when a lot of those committees will not be able to meet due to lack of quorum. So, yeah, you can, sometimes the, the perfect is the enemy of the good and we can go for perfect and I guarantee you that's when it's going to be the result over a year's time.
Perfect. We do have a motion and a second on the table, but there's some discussion that's going on, so Joel, you want to continue with that discussion?
Well, I understand the motion and I understand the merit in which it was based and I don't disagree with that, but I feel comfortable voting for two positions tonight.
Okay. We still have a motion on the table with a second. Is there any more further discussion before we call for a vote? Rob?
Yeah, we were, I guess it was kind of, well, it was, it was essentially advertised to us and also advertised to the public that we were going to be appointing two people tonight, so I'd rather stick with that, but it doesn't really matter that much to me, but that is what the expectation was, is, and that's what it says in writing, both in the packet and on the paper on the dais that we're going to appoint two tonight. That's, that's where my preference would be.
Further discussion, Rick?
I would also be in favor of voting for two tonight, so if we approve one, we would have the opportunity to come back with a second motion.
Okay. Again, we have, oh, sorry.
So on the, on the dais right now is a motion for one position. After we vote on that, we could bring back another motion to fill the second position?
That is a possibility, yes. You'd have to go through another motion, yeah.
True.
Okay, so currently we do have a motion on the table with a second to appoint one candidate to the Budget Committee tonight and put out for another application process to fill the other two positions. Further discussion? Indra?
I would just like to add that I, we appreciate, I appreciate all the candidates that stepped up to, to serve and, and I expect that if the motion passes, the two that weren't chosen will, will be in that pool and then I would trust you to get that together as quickly as possible. So we, we would have, just looking for the maximum number of great candidates for the Budget Committee.
Want to weigh in on this?
Yeah, I just want to clarify. Counselor Riker had a question about if, if this motion passes and then you appoint somebody, can you then call for a motion to appoint one more? The mayor characterized the, the motion, the motion would be that you would be appointing only one tonight. You would carry forward the other two candidates. We would reopen and do a quick turnaround and have another opportunity for you to appoint for the two positions at the, at the next, one, one of your upcoming business meetings. So you wouldn't be appointing, if the motion passes, you'd be appointing only one tonight.
So to clarify, Rick, your question to have a second motion to do a second appointment wouldn't carry. So we do have a motion on the floor with a second. Last call for discussion. Okay, we'll go through a vote. Victoria?
Yes.
No.
Eric?
Yes.
Yes.
Kathleen? Rick?
No.
Yeah, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Yes.
Joel?
No.
Okay, so I got three and three.
Four-three.
Four-three? We have four-three. I can't count tonight, sorry. So motion passes, so basically we will be doing, appointing just one out of the three candidates and then we will have to open it back up for an application process, an interview process, but it has to be done in a very timely manner as I understand this committee is meeting very soon, so we'll try to do that as quick as possible. Please make your votes and pass down your papers. Don't forget to sign, please. And if you guys have a little patience, give us a second. We'll be right with you. So we have a preference for Terry Hopkins to be appointed to the Budget Committee. Do we have a motion? Joel?
I'll make a motion to appoint Terry to the Budget Committee.
Do we have a second? Second by Kathleen. Roll call, vote. Victoria?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous. We have a new appointee to the Budget Committee. I'm going to leave it incumbent on staff to start the process for another application process and interview, and I know we are in a time crunch and I'm stating that a few times so everybody understands the adverse pressure that's on you now. All right, thank you. We're going to move on to appointment of seven members to the Public Safety Advisory Committee. Okay, there, you, this would be your super bright orange piece of paper. These people have gone through application and interview process. There has been previous discussion on that and so I'm going to open up for discussion on any one of these people. Does anybody want to advocate or say anything before you take a vote and pass your papers down? Doesn't look like it, so we will take a second to vote and please pass your papers down and sign your paper and we'll make a tally. Right hands, right hands.
So I, I have a problem tabulating these as I've got multiple people that have voted for two people when there's only one position. So I'm going to have to ask for everyone. I think I'm going to need to return these, even if you did it right. I'm going to just return all of them. If you can, if you voted for two, you circle two under the one that says one. I need you to, to please clarify just which one.
Doesn't it say at the bottom that any one of them could be put into the at-large category?
It, it does.
So people can vote for more than one, correct? In some of those categories?
But to actually represent, come, come representation from the Budget Committee, I think it's important that we have this is, this is representation from the Budget Committee because if they are representing the Budget Committee and they, and they leave, you need to appoint someone new from the Budget Committee. So I'm not sure and you won't be able to be sure, is this person representing a person at large or is this person representing?
I see.
The Budget Committee. So I'm going to pass all of these back. If you could take yours, please clarify for just one. I think at large, what we'll have to do is we may have to have a separate form come out for your at-large based on those that are not, based on those that are not appointed by the certain specific positions.
Yes, Rob?
So this goes back, I guess, a few years. I'm sorry. I almost threw my. This goes back a few years. I know the, I think the council, when Clint was on, did a secret ballot deal, which is what we did on the Budget Committee, but I think that we kind of went out of our way to change that about four years ago because right now nobody knows in the public, in fact, for that matter, on the council, who voted for which person for the Budget Committee. So that's really kind of the opposite of transparency. So that's the way we changed it about four years ago and I, I would suggest that we go back to that so the public knows how we've voted and who voted for who. Is that accurate, Erin? Is your memory?
Yeah, and we could do it either way. We do have the record right here with me. If you want to, I can go back and read the two that you just appointed. I can go back and read who voted for what. We do have that on record here on the dais. So if that was something you wanted us to, to read for the record, we definitely could do that, Counselor Pell.
And I, I really thank you for your input, Rob. We, I was under the assumption that we were actually going forward with previous protocol because this was not something that I had asked or any of the new counselors had asked to change, so, but we, we.
Previous protocol was, right, okay.
Yeah, so I, basically, I didn't print out the papers the way they are, didn't do this. It was, we, I'm assuming that this was previous protocol. If it's not, then we can have that discussion and change it as, as we go forward. So if you made your votes and changes, please pass them down. Rick?
So I just wanted some clarification. There's seven openings, but I realize as Erin has stated on here, we're only supposed to vote for one. So just for clarification, when do we, when do we have an opportunity to fill the other openings?
I think at this point, the way, the, the best way to do this is for you to appoint the, the specific committee members to the, to, to the positions that they hold. And then once those are done, as mentioned here, all of the candidates do qualify for citizen at-large. So then we could pass these back out to you and based on those that are left, you can pick anyone on the sheet for the citizen at-large positions.
Thank you. That helps me.
Those are your preferences for the positions that are called, specifically called out.
Okay, so for Public Safety Advisory Committee, representative from the Budget Committee, there's a high preference for Tom Bradens and Business Inside City Limits. There's a large preference, which was the only candidate, for William Lovelace, candidate from resident, non-business owner. There was a high preference for Alan Hartford and citizen at-large. To have two appointed, there was two candidates, Jay Meredith and Matthew Roslin. Roslin, sorry. With that, I have a motion to appoint as preferences. Joel?
I'm also going to include Terry Hopkins from the Chamber of Commerce, or is that necessary?
Yes, please also include that as a motion.
Okay, I make a motion to appoint Tom Brandis, William Lovelace, Jay Meredith, Matthew Roslin, the Honorable Alan Hartford, and the Honorable Terry Hopkins to the Public Safety Advisory Committee.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Indra. Making some notes. Give me one second. Roll call vote. Joel?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
And Victoria?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous. We have new members appointed to the Public Safety Advisory Committee. Okay, I don't want to read through them again, I'm sorry. Okay, so we're going to proceed.
We still have two at-large that you could choose from this list that's remaining if you'd like to, to try, to try to do that this evening also.
I make a motion that we choose two more from this list.
There are two positions for the at-large, but I think they just voted on both of, both Jay and.
Oh, all right. Yes, they did, okay.
We'll strike that last comment. Okay, so we're going to proceed on to general public comment. So per Resolution 247457, public comment will be limited to 30 minutes. Each individual will get two minutes to speak. This is an oppo, public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to address the city council on items not related to a public hearing or council action item for the council. The intent is to provide information that is pertinent to the city's jurisdiction. Each speaker will be given two minutes to address the council as a body, not to any individual. This meeting will proceed in an effective and courteous manner. Citizens and council members will be allowed to state their positions in an atmosphere free from slander, threats, and other public attacks. Signs and placards, outbursts of applause, campaigning for public office, or other disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. If you have any questions regarding any government provided services. light, there's a yellow light, and a red light.
Holly Morton, I have a house here in the city, and I also live in the county, my comment, it's a comment in general, that, you know, there's been a sort of a lack of civility in the last little while, you know, we're trying to get together as a community, and we've had some meetings, which we really appreciate the opportunity to speak to each one of you, and I'd just like to apologize that you guys have gone through some pretty rough times this week, don't give up, I think we need to work on civility as a community, and to be able to listen to everybody, we all wanna listen to the comments of all, and, you know, do that with kindness, so everybody has the opportunity to speak, so, hang in there, don't be intimidated, people are frightened right now, and angry, we all need to come together, thank you.
Nope. Sean?
Please step up. Hi, Shoney Nelson, Grants Pass, Oregon, what I wanted to bring to preface here is the Crest Hotel over on Sixth Street, okay, and you've got Sixth and Manzanita, there's a garbage can there, that the tenants to Crest has said that the management of that place has not paid their garbage. Now, my toddlers and I, who are four and five, have actually cleaned up garbage from Sixth all the way to Seventh, that, those are toddlers, and that's syringes and things like that. Now, if you have something that happens, like happened to J Street just recently, where they caught that on fire, some of the pictures that I have is actually garbage and things back up against the building in there, and hypodermics, and you also have people actually living in the upper roof area, I couldn't get pictures of them, because they're pretty quick to hide in that area, but I don't really think that's a good thing, and something should probably be done about it, I've suggested locking trashcans, I did talk to a public safety member that was there, that was just yesterday, I do believe, which was really cool, I got to catch him, he said that he actually talked to the owner, or was going to talk to the owners, and had talked to them before, and the owners were like, well, what difference is that going to make? The difference is, if no one knows that, is legalities. If it's open, all right, then it's really not that big of a deal getting someone who's digging in the dumpsters, whereas if they break into it, it is, I'll leave that for y'all to think about.
Thank you. Byron?
Good evening, councilors, Byron Robertson, lifelong Josephine County resident, business owner and contractor here in town, I'm glad that Jason's heard about this, and I just wanna bring attention to the council and to the City Grants Pass, that on December 18th, the governor signed an executive order requiring all construction contracts in the state of Oregon to have any state money to include project labor agreements. What this does for small businesses is it makes it extremely, extremely not competitive for us, and for instance, the water treatment plant, if it were to be bidding this next year, and the other large project that's about to start is Allen Creek realignment, if that job were to be bidding this month, or any time future after that executive order, it would put us small business, local contractors at extreme disadvantage, because what it does, it requires us to sign union contracts as an open shop business, to then proceed to even work on that. So, it would basically shut us out, and have any opportunity to be competitive in that process. It's very, it's very infant, as far as, it's something she passed without even telling anybody, she didn't tell the legislatures, she didn't contact the AGC, which is our largest committee that protects us, construction industry, they got them noticed 30 minutes before it hit the press. So, it was slid in last minute, under the cloak of darkness, however you wanna put it, but I would implore the city to extensively look into that, and hopefully come out against that, because it would kill small businesses' opportunities to bid and be competitive on anything in our city, from infrastructure, streets, sewer, water, any projects going forward that has a dime of state money, and I know it's very, in the early stages, and she has done nothing to explain the intricacies of it, but if it's how it's written, and how she wants, it does nothing to save money, it puts added costs on you as a city, so, thank you.
Thank you for your time. Kathleen?
Kathleen or Catherine?
Oh, sorry, I apologize, Catherine, please.
So, Catherine, Hamilton County, I just was talking to somebody yesterday, and she had spoken to somebody the day before, yes, okay, secondhand, that this woman had come in from Roseburg. Well, why'd you come in from Roseburg? Well, I came down here, she wasn't really giving an answer, she was kinda disorientated, said her car had been stolen, her car had been impounded. So, you're gonna ask yourself, why are people still coming to Grants Pass? Why are homeless still coming to Grants Pass? I'm sure we have lots of ideas, I don't, I don't know why this woman came to Grants Pass, but obviously, she was now carless, something's gotta get figured out before they start crawling up in the hills, like the one woman said on the news, and we end up looking like Southern California this summer, that scares the heck out of me. We've got too much unimproved, well, they have improved land down there, look what's going on with them, a lot of forests, a lot of BLM, a lot of that has not been touched in years, and these guys start crawling up there, where are we gonna be? No one, no one wants that to happen to anybody. Something's got to get figured out, if they're still coming down, and they're getting pushed out, they're getting pushed out all over the country, so, why they're coming to little Grants Pass? That's still kind of a question on some people's minds, thanks.
Thank you, Catherine, and I apologize for messing up your name.
Not the first.
Rick?
Rick McClittuck?
Okay, moving on, David Dapper?
Hi, David Dapper, city resident, and I recently went along, the residents along Fairview Drive, behind Wencow, and they're having a horrible time with the car campers out there, they're going through their stuff at night, stealing what they can, and a lot of them have small children that catch the bus out there, and I'm sure we don't have an offender status on who all's living out there with these children waiting for the school bus, but recently, by Riverside Park, we got resident or permit-only parking down that street that really helped the neighbors, and I wonder if we couldn't do that for these residents along Fairview Drive, behind Wencow, 'cause they're having a real tough go of it, and anyway, just maybe we can do something to help these people out, and these children, I mean, would you want your kid out there with god knows what, and waiting for the bus, and hoping that they end up coming home? Anyway, thank you, goodbye.
Thank you. Ruth Daley?
Hello again, Ruth Daley, Grants Pass, first, I would really like to thank Counselor King for your kind comments, it might have been at the workshop, or maybe it was the last meeting, the special meeting, but you kindly educated the, some of the councilors about not considering criminality as synonymous with homelessness, and I think that's really important, and I agree that words do matter, and it's really important, so, there's been a lot of talk about decorum here in the council chambers, so, I would really hope that we could pay more attention as people are speaking, I have had to listen over the past four years of people up here during their public comment, saying horrible, horrible things about people in our community, and that's been allowed, and I don't think it's okay. You always see me come in with my grandson, my son was homeless on the streets here, my brother was homeless, these are people's families that we're talking about, and our children hear what's said, and as a mom, a grandma, a nurse, a community member, I don't think it's okay for that to be said, you can disagree with what's going on, but to say horrible things, I mean, we have people in here that have suggested that people that are addicted should not get Narcan, I mean, what if it was your grandmother who couldn't get insulin, or somebody in your family that couldn't get their medicine for their, you know, chronic heart disease or something, it's not okay to say these things about our community. At the last meeting, somebody was escorted out for reading Green Eggs and Ham, that was the best part of that whole dang meeting, and then somebody suggests they're gonna come to guns at the park, and he just wanders out, and nothing is said, thank you.
Thank you, Ruth, and I do have to remind us, we wanna make sure that we address, not individuals, but the whole dais here, even if it isn't praise, specifically, we don't want Joel's head to get a little bit too big over there, but, but yeah, if we could stick to the decorum and stick to the rules, that would be great, and that just keeps everybody on the fair playing field. Next up, we have Greg?
First of all, I'd like to address all of you, and congratulations to your hard-fought election, we really need every one of you, and we're grateful for that. I appeared for the first time as a city council, I don't know if anybody would remember, but I am a Christian, and I pray, and I sometimes hear, and what I'd like to say is, I came to the previous mayor, and I said, I have a divine plan for the homeless, that I believe will work, not only for them, but for our community, for everybody here, and I never got a chance to, Mayor, I never got a chance to talk with her, and now she's not here, but, I'm here to ask for an appointment with you, Mayor, to bring this divine plan that I've been given, and start there with you, not to take anybody else's time, but I also need to have a meeting with the Josephine County Commissioners, too, because this is gonna take both governmental entities to approve, and I'd like to leave you with this, oh, good, I still have time, I'd like to leave you with this, this is gonna cost money. Well, I have a way that the Lord in prayer has given me to fund what I'm talking about, without taxpayer money, without the churches' money, without any of those things, and so, I believe that would work, and the finances would be there to support the plan. I'd also like to say, in the interim, what I do all the time right now is, I'm gathering all the shepherds of the churches, for purposes to discuss and pray for our community, thank you, I'd like to meet with you.
Thank you, if you wanna talk to Sarah, she's skulking around outside, I just saw her, so.
Sarah?
Thank you very much, and let's try to keep to the timeline here, Brenda?
Sisson?
Brenda Sisson, and I'm county, but I am very interested in the homeless, as I was myself, I haven't come out with this, you know, publicly a lot, but I have mentioned it in the past, and I became a truck driver instead of being homeless, that was my choice. As far as the homeless are, for everybody's goodwill to solve their problem on both sides of the aisle, they are not involved, they're not here, and they have never come, except for a very chosen few, on a certain issue in the past, but the ones out there that are in the middle, in the mix, everybody's trying to figure it out, there is no figuring anything, unless they themselves make the decision to change. I suggest that you, as a city council, get involved with them, and perhaps giving them a questionnaire, have them fill out something that tells you about them or their ideas, what do they need, what do they require, I'm not saying that this is gonna be a promise, that this is gonna be coming true, but it could still give an opening door, because their time is running out, and they're not gonna fit on Seventh Street, they're just not, it's just too tiny, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mike Pelfrey?
Mike Pelfrey, city resident, I was just up in Salem and Kaiser, in honor of our previous city councillor and his swearing-in, I will tell you that I was around the capital of our state, and I saw no tents, I saw only one homeless person, and in Kaiser, I actually saw a homeless person, spoke to him and asked him, I said, where are your low-barrier shelters? And they said, we don't have them here. So, why do we have them here? So, I have a solution, we know that this camp is gonna close, and so, here's my solution, we have a rest area down along I-5, and it's right next to the Rogue Valley, or the mid-Rogue, or whatever the hell that park is down there, that's got a tremendous amount of land, it has, it hits and checks off all the barriers, it has hot showers, it has water, it has parking, it has green space, it has plenty of places for the homeless to go, but the best part of this solution is that is state property, that is not the city of Grants Pass, that is not Josephine County, that is the state of Oregon, because guess who caused most of this? Is the state of Oregon's twisted ideology, this state is as screwed up as a coat hanger. And so, at the end of the day, what we need to do is, when these people are told to leave, they need to have an opportunity to go down to that state park and that rest area, and keep in mind, the word rest, you know, I keep hearing that, we have to have a place for them to rest, well, it's actually titled the proper way, it's a rest area, it also serves as a navigation center, you know why? 'Cause you can get right on the interstate and navigate to wherever you feel your heart desires. Let's see what the state does when the homeless are on their property and demanding, will they arrest the homeless, will they give them three days to exit stage left? I don't think so. This is a state problem, not Grants Pass.
Okay, I got one last card, but I think he stepped out, Bob?
He's gone.
Okay, with that, we'll close out our public comments, and I appreciate you guys all acting with much decorum, and we will go forward to our consent agenda.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, there was a few items that have been starred, that you requested to be starred on your consent calendar, I think I'm first on the agenda, if you look down the list, two of those, I'll be addressing with one presentation here that deals with the Grants Pass Police Association labor contract and the Sergeant's labor contract, so, I have a few slides that just highlight what's in your packet. What's in your packet is an opportunity for you to ratify a three-year labor contract with the Grants Pass Police Association, we entered into negotiations with the Police Association on September 11th, and we had a number of meetings- desires. Let's see what the state does when the homeless are on their property and demanding. Will they arrest the homeless? Will they give them three days to exit stage left? I don't think so. This is a state problem, not Grants Pass.
Okay, I got one last card, but I think he stepped out. Bob? Okay. With that, we'll close out our public comments, and I appreciate you guys all acting with much decorum, and we will go forward to our consent agenda.
There was a few items that have been starred, that you requested to be starred on your consent calendar. I think I'm first on the agenda, if you look down the list. Two of those, I'll be addressing with one presentation here that deals with the Grants Pass Police Association labor contract and the sergeants' labor contract. So I have a few slides to just highlight what's in your packet. What's in your packet is an opportunity for you to ratify a three-year labor contract with the Grants Pass Police Association. We entered into negotiations with the police association on September 11th, and we had a number of meetings with the union members. After two meetings, the city and the police association reached a tentative agreement for a three-year contract. The tentative agreement reached is within the parameters set by council for the city's The terms of the contract call for a three-year agreement with the following compensation adjustments. January 2, 2025, there's a salary schedule adjustment of 6.5% for all, and there are some incentive increases for advanced certifications from 2.5% to 3%, and detective clothing increase from 750 to 1,000 upon assignment. Boot reimbursement charges changes from 200 every three years to 200 every two years. In the second year, July 1, 2025, there's a salary schedule adjustment of 1.5% for all. January 1, 2026, there's a salary schedule adjustment of 3% for all, and incentive increases for advanced certifications. Boot reimbursement, $200 every two years to $300 every two years. And January 1, 27, a salary schedule adjustment of 3% for all. So what that represents from a cost perspective is there's some costs for calendar year 25 at $341,000, including benefits and payroll. The incremental cost increase for '26 is a little over $1 million, and for '27 is $1.399 million. I do want to state that it was a good negotiation process with GPPA. Both parties were very respectful, and as mentioned, we are providing you these contracts within parameters of what council provided the negotiation team. And with that, I'll pause there, unless you want me to go ahead and just do the sergeant one also.
This was called for a start item for a little bit of a background on it. Do you have any quick question? Not seeing any. Proceed, please.
All right. The next one is going to be very similar. It's basically the same thing. We did do a negotiation with the sergeants for the police association. This is a new labor contract. That's really the, one of the major differences, is the sergeants did petition for a specific representation in 2024, and their petition was approved by the Employee Relations Board for the state of Oregon. Therefore, the city was required to negotiate with them in a collective bargaining agreement. Before that time, they were exempt employees. The salary schedule adjustments are behind me there. There's a very similar 6.5%. It's very similar to the previous one, so we can stay in alignment. We want to make sure that we're, there's no compaction or compression between those two entities. So you're looking at very similar salary schedule adjustments. The dollar amounts are much smaller, though, because we're talking about a very small group of individuals, the sergeants, versus a larger group, which is the full police association. So the first year is $50,000 cost, the second year is $157, and the incremental cost is $212,000 for the third year. And that concludes my presentation on both of those items.
Again, that was a start item that was requested for with a small presentation. Is there any quick, to-the-point questions for that, Rick?
I don't have a question on that, but I didn't know, when Aaron at the podium, if he could just do a quick summary of item E as well concerning the grant on Spalding. But although, there may be a question on this item here.
Oh, I see. I see. Would you like to call out an item on Spalding? Yes, and thank you, councillor, for reaching out to me in advance for item E on Spalding. Because you reached out to me, I am able to do that, but I'll refer that to Brad, who can provide some additional information on item E, if you'd like to star item E.
I have a couple of questions. So I'm just wondering, the costs involved, is that based on that we have all our positions filled, or?
Yeah, for those positions, yes. Yeah, for that we'd have the sergeant positions filled and police officers filled, and, you know, it's rare that we're 100% full. We're hoping here shortly that we ultimately will be almost all full in the police department, but we usually have anywhere from, I'm sure, three to seven positions open at one time, or more.
Yeah, it's really, it's complex hiring people these days, right? When we think we've hired a good grip of folks, they fail backgrounds. It's frustrating. So we continue to slug it out. We do have some good folks in arrears and going through the process from, through all the departments built into the police department. So it's police, it's dispatch, it's our record specialist. So we have quite the grip of people that make up the GPPA, and then also there's seven sergeants within that secondary group. So I am hopeful that we'll be able to fill these positions in our, before our next fiscal year kicks off.
Okay, so that amount is, when all our positions are filled, it wouldn't be higher, possibly less?
Yeah, that's my department. So like budgeting, we cost all these for when the position is full. So that way, we know what we're negotiating will affect it if we ever were to be 100% at capacity.
Okay. And then my second question, I know we've heard in the past that our, the pay here is less than equivalent cities, so does this new arrangement bring us kind of into the mix, or are we still way down?
So this brings us, this is something that we negotiated with the police association, and it does get us closer to market. Are we the highest-paying police department? No. Are we the lowest? No. We try to be in a competitive range, or plus or minus 5%, and that's usually what's considered competitive range. But this is something that we, both parties did agree upon with regards to adjusting salary schedules.
Continue.
I'm done unless, unless councillor Riker sounds like he wanted to star another item.
Correct. And I believe that was, what was that, E for the?
For the grant.
Resolution for the public works, was that E? Okay. And you do have information on that ready?
We do, and then also, we have another start item from JC with regards to our fee schedules.
Okay, so JC?
We've got two more to go.
Okay.
I have one of the start items for the comprehensive fee schedule. As a little bit of a background, I'll go through that we did, yes, just approve the January 1, 2025 comprehensive fee schedule on December 4, which we typically do annually. What I'm bringing here to you today are mistakes that we found, and so we're trying to fix these as quick as possible. And so I'll run through those. So for a little bit of the background, because we do have several new people, we do use most of the fees as a CPIU, Consumer Price Index, for urban, which is statistics by the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics. We do acknowledge the comprehensive fee schedule annually. We have in our municipal code ordinances and resolutions numerous amounts that allow us to peg those rates to CPIU. And then normally, every year on January 1, we do an adjustment to these, which is based on a November to October calendar to calculate that CPIU for January 1. So as a reminder, we do have those automatic inflationary adjustments, and they particularly go towards our utility user rates, SDCs, and most of our planning and engineering fees for this last year. Behind me, I do have the rates of the actual inflation that was calculated from November to October, and that led to a 3.02% increase. So some of the mistakes that we caught afterwards, to make it easier for developers and some of our community members to actually be charged, we did do some rounding down in previous years. We missed that in the calculation this year. So this adjustment here just changes one of those charges, like from 494.92 with that 3.2%, 3.02% increase to 474.75. Again, it's for the ease of the customer. On pages 22 and 23, in the encroachment grading and miscellaneous fees, same thing. We tried to do this to make it easier for the customer, and we missed doing this update. So you'll see that all of those were adjusted back down to the nearest quarter. This is the biggest mistake, but it's the easiest one to make. We did make an error on the system development charges. So we included a math error. Basically, we started with the wrong number, and SDCs has a ratio built into it. So when you get one of the numbers wrong, all of them become wrong, because they are based predicated on the single residential family rate. And so once you start with the wrong number, again, it follows through. The good thing is, is all of these adjustments are actually cheaper for the community, as all of these numbers will actually come down as far as charges. And so you'll see, as an example, on page 24, the water system development charge for a three-quarter inch went from $3,400, $3,500 to about $3,300. And then another, just Scribner's error, we caught that we had a typo making something $1,400 when it was only supposed to be $146. And the call-to-action date is tonight. With most of these rates and fees, council does have the discretion to amend the fees at any point during the year. I do know that there are other plans to, hopefully in the next six months, look at other fees that we could charge part of the community members that we are not recouping the cost for. And when we get those settled, we will hopefully bring those forward to you for your consideration. And as of now, I'll take any questions.
Do we have any questions? I'm going to, geez, I always got questions. Andrew.
So I understand it's good news that the fees are going down, but when, how long have we been overcharging people?
I don't think we have overcharged. Technically, it would have been as of January 1, but I think we caught it in time, that I don't believe that we charged anybody. And if we did, we'll go back and amend that, because I think part of the staff report says that this is to be retro, back to January 1.
Thank you.
Victoria.
Could you speak a little bit to how much the fees were raised? Was it across the board? Was it different for different services? I mean, generally so, not for all of them off the top of your head?
So we do have several pages of fees. A lot of them do remain stagnant from year to year. Council hasn't necessarily had a large appetite to change some of them, as they do affect the community. So just recently, we just changed the rate for admission into the pool, and that had, say, the same rate for 10 years. So not all rates are created equal, but we do have several of the utility and SDC fees that are connected with a CPI.
I just wanted to make a comment. Good catch, and that you did it quickly. I just want to commend you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Unless there's any other questions on the quick presentation, then we're going to let you go. So at this time, I'll give it over. I'm missing, Rick did have actually request to star item E, and it looks like Brad has some information to present.
I do, Mayor, just pulling it up right now.
Do I got to fill the time with a joke? Because I don't have any.
Better you than me.
I know.
Yeah, and to be truthful, Wade, who is standing in the back here, may be a better person to do this. Jason is also here, so we have the right people in the room, but I'm going to go ahead and just give you three short slides. So we're talking about the item on Spalding Industrial Park, correct councillor? And this relates to a Public Works and Economic Adjustment Assistance Grant application. You will see from time to time in your packets, and this is mostly for the new folks, on the consent agenda, anytime staff sees a potential grant out there and is 100,000 or more in value, the city has a policy that says those need to come to you first before we actually apply for them. The policy allows for grants less than that, that as long as they fit adopted goals, they fit into adopted plans, that we can apply for those. But if they hit that 100,000 or more, then we do typically bring them forward, letting them know we're intending to apply for them. So this is an example of that. If you approved it tonight, the resolution would authorize the city manager to submit it. This particular grant's for $2 million. It is to the Economic Development Administration to upgrade our wastewater services that are in the southern part of Spalding Industrial Park, and it relates to the council goal of infrastructure. Briefly, the scope is, the scope of this grant kind of originated with a study that was done by Public Works Department about how is, what is the most effective way to serve this portion of the industrial park? And that's where a lot of the material in this grant is sort of originating from. There's two phases in it. Phase one is to extend a gravity sewer line along Spalding, and I've got a map for this to show you really quickly, as far east as possible, so that stays in the existing street. Phase two is a deeper line which goes along the railroad tracks that are along the south side of Spalding. So it's a two-phase project. Both of those are covered under the, under the total project. It's about $5 million project. It really is intended to kind of help Spalding become a little bit more competitive when it comes to marketing Spalding as a location for industrial users. We, as most of you know, that the park's been there a long time. We have had some of the lots developed, because we have some capacity for sewer, but we have had other lots that are not able to develop, because there is no capacity to sewer those properties. We actually had fodder issues as well on some of those. In the materials that you have, there is explanation that this project does align with both the city's comprehensive plan, as well as SoReD's adopted plan, and that's important, because there are specific policies already in place that say the city needs to identify ways to improve infrastructure in Spalding. That helps the grant become more competitive when you can point to those adopted policies. So here is a map of the area, and the project that we're really talking about is the yellow line here. So here's Spalding Avenue. The railroad track runs along the south part of it here. Shannon Lane is on the west side, and then, I honestly don't know if it's Favel or Faville, I'm not sure, but Faville Road is on the east side. The yellow line is the sewer that we're talking about. Today, there's a manhole right at the corner of Shannon and Spalding, and that's where the sewer stops today. So as you're looking at this eastern side, there is no way to sewer that, so we need to get sewer along Spalding, and then also come south on Shannon, and then along the railroad tracks. So this project would take it to about this point where the arrow is. And then in the future, if we get developers that come in that want to develop along the Amen Road, and this area, or south of the church, they would need to pay for the other extensions of the sewer line. But this grant would put in kind of the main and that deep gravity system, as well as a lift station. In terms of cost implication, the project is estimated about $5 million. This grant request is $2 million. There is a 50% match requirement for this grant. What I have down below here is taken out of our current adopted FY25 budget, in the capital budget. This page kind of shows you what kind of funding has been already allocated to this project. It's been in the works for quite a while. There's urban renewal money, there is SDC charge money. There's wastewater capital that has been put in there. So you can see, in terms of available resources under FY25, we're looking, you know, in that, around the two, a little over $2 million that's there. So that would cover us in terms of a local match. Call to action is tonight, and then your alternatives are to choose to authorize the submittal of this application, choose not to authorize it, or you could also potentially move it to a workshop. There is a little bit of a timing issue that we have. In order to get the grant in, we do need to get it in, I think, in March. So hopefully that helps.
Cool, thank you, Brad. Any quick questions? Nope. I think I want to make a statement, though. You can pretty much clarify this, Brad. You can pretty much clarify this, Brad. This has been the sewer infrastructure for Spalding Industrial Park, has been one of the linchpins for actually development for that, for the many, many, many years, because of the elevation difference in the, basically getting the sewer to it. So this would actually help promote us getting some businesses or somebody in there to develop that area.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
All right. So at this point, I'm gonna hand it over to our newly appointed president, and if you would please be so kind as to read the consent agenda verbatim.
I will. I'll try to read it quickly. Resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Pacific Power for the installation of utilities for the replacement water treatment plant project number WA6207. Resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Pacific Power for the installation of temporary utilities for the replacement water treatment plant project number WA6207. Resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the Fifth Street Stormwater and Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project Number DO6371. Resolution authorizing the city manager to amend the City Engineer Master Services Agreement. Resolution authorizing the city manager to submit a Public Works and Economic Adjustment Grant Application. Resolution establishing the interest rate to be applied during the calendar year 2025 to deferred development agreement monies on deposit. Resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a three-year labor contract with the Grants Pass Police Association, GPPA, dash sergeants. Resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a three-year labor contract with the Grants Pass Police Association, GPPA. Resolution amending the comprehensive fee schedule for required adjustments. Motion accepting the certified results of the November 5th, 2024 general election. Motion acknowledging the system development charge annual report for fiscal 2024. Motion acknowledging the receipt of the monthly investment report for November 2024. Motion approving the minutes of the city council meeting of December 4th, 2024. Motion acknowledging the minutes of the Parks Advisory Committee meeting of November 14th, 2024. Motion acknowledging the minutes of the Urban Area Planning Commission meeting of November 13th, 2024. Motion acknowledging the minutes of the Committee on Public Art meeting of October 22nd, 2024. Motion acknowledging the minutes of the Bike Ways and Walkways Committee meeting of November 12th, 2024. Motion acknowledging the minutes of the Urban Tree Advisory Committee meeting October 14th, 2024. Motion acknowledging the minutes of the Tourism Advisory Committee meeting on November 5th, 2024. Motion acknowledging the minutes of the Collaborative Economic Development Committee meeting on October 24th, 2024.
Thank you. We have table open for a motion to approve. Joel.
I make a motion to approve the consent council, or the consent calendar.
Second by Rick. Joel.
Yes.
Indra.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Rob.
Yes.
Victoria.
Yes.
Consent agenda has been approved. At this time, we will be adjourning the city council meeting, and sticking around to convene the Urban Renewal Agency meeting. Can I get a motion?
I will move that we adjourn this meeting and join the next one.
I'll second.
Got a Joel second on that? Joel, how do you vote on that? Go quickly.
Yes.
Indra.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Rob. Victoria.
Yes.
Thank you. We will now adjourn regular meeting and bring the Urban Renewal Agency meeting to open that. With the consent agenda, we have a motion acknowledging the receipt of the Grants Pass Urban Renewal Agency Annual Report for Fiscal Year 2024. That is the only thing on the consent agenda. Open for a motion.
I make the motion that we acknowledge the receipt of the Grants Pass Urban Renewal Agency Annual Report, Fiscal Year 2024.
Do you have a second? Rick, second? Roll call vote. Joel.
Yes.
Indra.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Rob.
Yes.
Victoria.
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes the Urban Renewal Agency meeting. Looking for a motion to adjourn.
I make the motion to adjourn the Urban Renewal Agency meeting and reconvene the city council meeting.
Second? Rick? Roll call. Victoria.
Yes.
Rob.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Indra.
Yes.
Joel.
Yes.
Urban Renewal Agency meeting is over, and we have reconvened the city council meeting. Now we are open for matters for mayor and council. We'll start with any matters from the mayor and council comments. Oh, sorry, Aaron.
Well, we do have, we did have a special request on Monday to have just a brief presentation on strategic planning, and have that as a discussion point. You can take that whenever, but I'm prepared to discuss that.
No, that's absolutely fine. I apologize, I didn't see it on the agenda here. So let's proceed with that first. Thank you.
All right. It looks like we're having technical difficulty, so you will not be seeing something on the screen, but luckily, we have a hard copy. So if you could just follow along with the hard copy, I'll go through this. There's only like four slides, or four or six slides. So just gonna start off with, council wanted to discuss strategic planning for 2025. And I'm on page, I'm on slide three now, which just states that the last strategic planning session was in 2023. We did not do strategic planning session in '24. That's okay. Many cities adopt strategic plans that are one to five years out. So, you know, having two years with the same strategic plan is totally fine. We had still a lot of stuff that we were working on. We did a budget to acquire the services of a consultant who specializes in strategic planning for 2025. Why do we do strategic planning? Well, it does a couple of things. There's four main steps. We do some, we analyze, we design, we implement, and we evaluate. So we're asking a few questions. Where are we now? Where are we going? How are we gonna get there? And how will we know when we have arrived? That's really what strategic planning helps us with. But more importantly, if you break it down to the process that we have here internally, strategic planning has been a key success factor for a number of things, including building trust between council and staff, building trust between council, staff, and the community. Because council establishes through strategic planning the primary goals for this community, the primary goals for the organization. We do that through our current process, which would be entailed in the strategic planning session for '25. By first, council reviews the state of the city through council, community, and staff input. So you're gathering as much information as possible on what the current status is, what our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats are. Council then develops through a strategic planning process. We analyze that data, and we identify some of the issues. After you've gone through and you've identified, you've taken on all the input, and you have a discussion, you have an idea where you want to go, you ultimately adopt a strategic plan. That strategic plan could be one, two, three-year plan that will help guide the city. One of the key pieces with that is then staff, once you have a strategic plan, we create what's called a work plan. So the strategic plan is more broad in nature, it has goals for us to achieve. Staff then takes those goals and tries to work out objectives and tasks that make your goals come true. We do that through what's called a work plan. So the work plan is more detailed. So if your goal is to have a new water treatment plant, that's a nice big goal, but there's steps, years of steps associated with the development of a water treatment plant. The work plan breaks those down, so we have an idea of how much it's gonna cost, and we set it up in SMART goals, so we know, we know it's specific, it's measurable, we know what kind of resources it takes to attain those, how relevant is it, and what type of time commitment is associated with it. We assign that to departments and to people, and we start accomplishing those tasks and those objectives. What's the beauty about the next step, which is key to one of the things you talked about tonight, which is the budget committee? Here in Grants Pass, we're blessed with having great guidance from the council through a strategic planning process, which then drives the budget. Because when we develop the work plan, we then have an idea of what type of resources and how we're gonna achieve your goals. The budget is the allocation of resources to your strategic plan. When we have the guidance from council on that, it makes budgeting extremely easy. I've, years and years ago, worked with organizations that don't have clear direction in that strategic plan, and it's very difficult to actually do the budget. You've got departments and divisions, and people vying for certain resources. It's not the case in Grants Pass. In Grants Pass, our budget process is actually relatively easy, because we have great guidance from the council, and we know where those resources go. Once we adopt the budget, we then implement the work plan with the resources that have been allocated to us, and then we monitor our success, and we celebrate our successes. The strategic planning sessions, and what we would be looking at from services of a consultant that specializes in strategic planning, is we would do some retreat planning, which would clarify expectations and process alignment. They'd be reaching out to you as a council, and getting feedback from you, asking you questions about the strategic planning session, and what your thoughts are on the community, and what you would like to have accomplished. We'd also gather community and stakeholder surveys for the public. Your advisory committees have been working on potential goals, so they're prepared to provide you with goals and what they would like to see have accomplished. We then ultimately have a full one-day planning session. And that planning session would consist of two things. One, we need to make sure that we're aligning what our mission, vision, and values are. Once you've defined that, and you know that that's where you want to go, it makes it a little easier to finish off the planning session by identifying imperatives, objectives, and key initiatives, which are those objectives and tasks. That would all then be put into a package. The consultant would put that into together, a package, and create a strategic plan document that you would ultimately adopt at a future business meeting. So that's sort of the process. It does, if you look at the calendar, I think it's slated for February 13th that we would be having the strategic planning session, so there's a lot of work that still needs to be done between now and then, but some work has already been completed, and I know the advisory committees have talked about some of their goals also. So that's a brief presentation on strategic planning.
Thank you, Aaron. Does anybody have any quick questions? Kathleen.
Yeah, I just wanted some clarification on, is the Coraggio Group the group that has been designated as the strategic planning consultant?
Yes.
And how were they chosen?
We did, we did do some outreach with consultants for that. Coraggio was chosen ultimately because of their experience within the state of Oregon, working with other municipalities. They also have a contract with the League of Oregon Cities. League of Oregon Cities has contracted the Coraggio Group to help the cities within the state of Oregon that can't fund strategic planning to make that happen. We have a program in place where we're helping to subsidize some of the strategic planning through the Coraggio Group, or some smaller cities, 5,000 and under population, and those type of cities will be able to have a strategic planning process for around $10,000 to $15,000. And they came highly recommended also from that perspective. So that's how the Coraggio Group got selected.
Victoria.
Yes, I think I was the one that asked for the presentation, and thank you so much for it. My interest was in asking about the cost of the contract with the Coraggio Group. And because, as I remember, remembered, it seemed like it was very expensive. And if there would be other alternatives for us to do it ourselves, so it would obviously, the cost would be significantly less. And what would that look like? And so, are there other alternatives? So what is the cost of the contract of the strategic plan? And can we do it ourselves?
Sure, answered both of those questions. The cost is approximately $26,000 for this process, which is a relatively extensive process to go through. The alternative is, you asked if we can do it ourselves, and the answer would be, yes, we could do it ourselves. It's recommended that we have a consultant come in and establish a baseline, and a new strategic planning plan for city council. In years past, I have facilitated all the strategic planning sessions. I've done, I think, 11 or 12, I think, this year, with only last year being the one that we have not done. But two years ago, when we did our last strategic planning session, it was recommended that we bring in a third-party consultant to come in, and revamp our whole system, and look at it from a different perspective. And so we went forward with, through the budget process last year, included budget dollars to accomplish this goal with bringing in a third-party to do that. So.
Indra.
So we're discussing it, so I'm assuming we haven't committed fully to paying that and doing that. Can you tell us why it changed last year? Then you've done it all these years, and what was the reasoning for changing and getting a consultant?
Well, there is a few things. We did have some struggle to some degree with regards to the planning process when we did the retreat, with regards to council, and councils going through the whole planning process, the strategic planning. And then, also, we have a strategic plan that really needs to be fully revamped. Our strategic plan has gotten very large over the years, and we really need to start fresh with a new strategic plan. And because of the complexity of, and the complexity of having the daily retreat, and wanting to start fresh with a whole new program for strategic planning, the third-party was recommended to come in.
Kathleen.
The information that you handed us at the orientation, it says here the proposed investment is $23,000, and the price includes one trip to Grants Pass to conduct two planning sessions.
Yes.
That's a lot of money for two, two planning sessions.
Yeah, the, again, there's a lot of work that needs to be done on the front end. It took Karen and I, and our department directors, and the executive team, three months to do strategic planning. That's how long it takes to get prepared to do it right, to get you the information you need. It is a lot of work on the front end that you don't see, in order for you to get to a, for you to get to a product where you're at your day retreat, and you can walk away with some imperatives, objectives, and key initiatives. So yeah, there's just one day. We actually had three days when we used to do it, but there's just one day, but there is so much work in the front end that you don't see.
Rick.
Aaron, is this funded out of the council's account?
This is just, but this is budgeted dollars that I think are the general fund or non, but I think it comes out of the council budget.
Yeah, again, back to Aaron's point, this was recommended by the council, and so in putting together the fiscal year '25 budget, it is in the mayor and council budget that is paid out of administrative services, which is an internal service, which the entire city pays into and funds.
Rob.
So I have two questions, Aaron. So you said that the, the, a service provider that you chose was recommended? Who recommended them?
Well, we did, I reached out to some firms, and this was the one that was, one, League of Oregon Cities Board recommended them, highly recommended them, and so did a couple of the other cities that they worked for. So they did become highly, they were highly recommended.
And, let's see. And then, what was it that, you know, what was it, who was it that actually initiated this process of going out of house to do this? Because I don't, I don't remember council giving that direction at all. I don't remember council in any way, shape, or form giving that direction, but I could, I could be wrong on that. So who was it that initiated this, taking it out of house?
So this was discussed two years ago, and at the time, council decided to not do that last year, I think through the budget process, it was mentioned that we have dollars for strategic planning and doing a third-party consultant. I can't recall if council as a whole said, yes, let's do... I can't recall if council as a whole said yes, let's do, I don't think they did, but we have budgeted dollars in there for that, to make that happen, and it was staff's recommendation that we use a third party for strategic planning. Council did not want to do strategic planning last year.
Victoria?
So have any monies been spent to acquire the services of the Coraggio Group? And if there have been, what would the loss be? And can we cancel the contract? And what are we asking? I feel like I'm hearing you say, we're asking staff to do a great deal if we move back to doing it the way that we did before. Is that some, but I think staff has done it many times before. So tell me what that would look like. If we were to ask to cancel this contract, what are we actually asking of you and staff? And then the money question.
I greatly, counselor, I greatly appreciate your asking how that would impact staff. That's an important question to ask, and I do appreciate that respect. Yeah, we could cancel if you so desire, you just need to tell me. Will there be some costs associated with it? Yes, what the dollar amount is, I don't know, but it would not be the amount that you saw in front of you. And then can staff do it? If council wants me to do strategic planning, I'll do strategic planning. It's something that I absolutely love to do. However, it will take a heavy lift to get it done in time for us to be able to have direction from you before we start developing the budget. So it will take, but can we make it happen? Yes. Can we do a modified version of what I've done in the past, at least this year? Yes, we can make that happen if council desires. I just need your direction.
Go ahead, Victoria, and then Rick.
Oh, it came and then it went, so it'll come back.
Okay, go ahead, Rick.
Aaron, you briefly mentioned budget. It's my impression, starting February, you're heavily involved with putting the budget together for this coming year. And it's my perception this would be maybe improperly, a real burden on staff to do it, to take this on at this point. I mean, if normally you're putting this together in November, December, presenting it in January, and here we are in January, is that impression, I would say, accurate?
Yeah, I'm two and a half months behind a three-month process right now to do strategic planning. So can I pick up some of the pieces that we already have in place? Yes. If council wants me to do it, will I do it? Of course I will. We are a professional team here, the ex-team and myself, and we will make it happen if that's what council desires.
Victoria?
Can the monies for the strategic planning be rolled over into something else? Or will it remain for strategic planning in the future?
I'm not sure if they're fully unallocated general fund-type dollars or if they came from all the sources. If they did, there might be some restrictions, but J.C. will answer that question.
Sort of. So yeah, it funds all the discretionary dollars that go into departments. So there is some discretion as far as rolling that over, like you said, or changing the prerogative of what those potential dollars were earmarked for. We could hold it to do it with something next year as far as fund balance. So there's a plethora of ways to utilize those dollars because we're still going to have needs of council, of strategic planning, of finance, of HR, of city manager's office, and, and, and that pull from the same resources.
Rob?
So a comment first, which leads to a question. So the comment was, is that council didn't do strategic planning last year. It was agreed on among council that we had enough essentially goals from the prior year that we hadn't completed, that that would essentially become the strategic plan for last year. So essentially, we had a plan, but it was essentially the leftovers from the prior year. With that, it leads to a question. So this $26,000, and you mentioned it earlier, that some cities will do a two or even a five-year plan. Can this $26,000 be looked at as a two-year expense, meaning that if we didn't do strategic planning in '26 and essentially did the leftovers in '25, would it be accurate to look at this as $13,000 per year rather than a $26,000 expense?
Great question, counselor, pal. I think going in the future that we have a strategic plan that is at least two years. So I think that that would be amortizing it out that way would be appropriate thought process. I don't think a yearly strategic plan is probably the most efficient and effective way to deal with things, especially with so many of the things that you might have taking longer than 12 months to accomplish.
So I just had a quick question. Obviously, this is probably, hopefully, a yes answer. Did you do a cost-benefit analysis between your staff's putting this together like normal versus having a professional third party?
Well, in the past, we've never done a cost-benefit analysis and actually put aside, we don't have a cost accounting just for strategic planning in our time sheets. It's all mayor/council support. We have not broken it down to specific strategic planning, but it did take quite a bit of Karen and I and department director's time to make that happen.
And I only ask that because I'm kind of getting the sentiment from some of the questions that a lot of people aren't stomping, stomaching that cost out of pocket well, so I just figured if that was backup. So at this point, do you guys have any more questions for Aaron? So Aaron, with this presentation and these questions, do you feel that you need more direction?
Well, yes, I do. I need, I mean, it sounds like there's some, Mayor, I definitely, you know, council, I just need to know what you want to have accomplished, or how would you like to get it done, and we'll make it happen, but I just need clarity.
I don't want to kick the can down the road, but do you feel that we should have more discuss, do you feel from your side of the table that you could provide more discussion in a workshop before we made a decision, or?
I'm not sure if any additional information would be value-added for you to make a decision, but if it would be and you're requesting it, I'll definitely try to put it together.
Okay. With that aspect, do you guys feel that you need more information, or do we entertain a motion to proceed or change? Go ahead, Indra.
I just would like to start a discussion. I do understand the value of strategic planning, and I do understand the time and energy it takes to, for staff to be able to do that, especially on pretty short notice. On the other hand, I just can't see spending $25,000, $23,000, $26,000, whatever, on that when we have so many financial issues going forth, and I would rather see that money than spent on council for that to go to something else. That's my opinion. I've done a lot of that in the past. I don't know if I could help, I mean, I'm happy to help in any way I can because I know it is a burden and I know it's important, and I think it's exciting, Rob, what you said, you know, it should be two years out or three. I would like to look at our goals five years out and more, so that would be my thoughts on it.
Victoria?
I moved to cancel the contract with the Coraggio Group for strategic planning and to roll that back over to Aaron and staff.
Sorry. It looks like there might be some comments before we call for a second?
Well, there's still, you need a second, though. You need a second before you make any comments or advise.
So we call for a second, we've got Kathleen a second, so that opens up for discussion for you. Rick?
As you know, I've been here for a few years, and Aaron has done a fantastic job in presenting strategic planning over the years. As I said, usually they start putting together this in November and December, and in December is a real crunch time for them to get it out, and here we are into January. I think it would be, personally, I think it would be a real advantage to have a different perspective for one year, and I like the idea that this would be a two-year project. So I would be supportive of making it a two-year contract and having this, at least this one time, having an outside firm that specializes in this do the presentation. Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion on the table with a second. Any further discussion? Joel?
So I've been involved in a lot of transitions, and transitions are good opportunities to change things. Transitions can also be costly incident amongst themselves, especially if people feel jerked around. And in this case, you know, at this late notice, I know my staff with the Forest Service coming in as a new district ranger, if a week or two weeks or a month before this process, I said, we're not going to do this this way anymore, we're going to do it that way, they would feel jerked around. Now, our goal is not to minimize jerking around, our goal is to manage the city and the money. I think at this point in time, what I would do personally, if I was in charge, is I would go ahead with the contract for two years, and I would say from here on out, we do it in-house, because Aaron did a great job. But to have a smooth transition and to treat people with respect and recognize the other jobs that they are doing, I'm not sure at this point in time if it's worth jerking them around.
Thank you, Joel, and you are one-eighth in charge. Victoria?
I think that Aaron mentioned earlier that something about a very pared-down plan, and I think that it was my expectation that that is what it would be, given that you said you're two months behind a three-month project. So I think I would be for it, but, and understand that it's, we're not asking you to do the same thing.
Indra?
I just want to make clear, I do not want to jerk you around like that, so I hope, those are strong words, and I know it's a challenge, like what we would ask you to do if you were to do it, and I hope that you don't feel that way because that is not the intention whatsoever. Thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Kathleen?
So what I heard earlier was that there is some strategies left over from last year, and how much of that would be incorporated into this year that wouldn't have to be like planned, that we would just be adding maybe a smaller portion because there is so much from last year already?
If I was, if I was to do this and take the helm at this point, I would start with a blank slate. We would have projects that are in the work plan that we have to complete and move forward with, projects that we already have budgeted, projects that we're 20%, 30%, 40% into it, and we need to finish those projects. But when it comes to aspirations and future goals, I would just cut them loose, and we would start with a clean slate, and I think that's likely what Coraggio Group was going to do also.
Rob?
Well, it's obvious that, you know, we've got the, we'll say the more experienced counselors who seem to have a better sense of what went into strategic planning, and the less experienced counselors that really have no firsthand experience at all. It's been in the last week, it seems like the less experienced counselors have made a lot of decisions about things that they know very little about. Those that are directed out to the public, I actually really feel pretty strongly and take issue with on this particular one because it's more directing whatever inefficiency or whatever lack of efficiency would be, would occur from this, is more directed back towards ourselves, including our staff. So, you know, that's kind of something that I would feel less, I'm bothered less by that because it's more of a, essentially, we're doing it to ourselves rather than doing it to the public. And I think that, you know, the $13,000 a year, or whatever it is, that the new people don't want to spend or don't see the value of it of, don't see any, don't see sufficient value for the 13, I get it, especially from their perspective. I totally get it from their perspective. And again, that's a little bit of chaos that we're directing back at ourselves. And again, I'm less bothered by that than some of the other things that were directed to the public that also I feel were kind of hasty decisions that weren't well thought out. But again, this is on, it's coming back at us rather than going out to public, and I'm not as bothered by that.
So you guys want to continue to go around circles, or want to just vote on this? I'll call for a vote. Joel?
Can you repeat the motion, please?
Victoria made the motion. Can you repeat the motion, please?
To cancel the contract with the Coraggio Group and move forward with Aaron doing strategic planning on a probably pared-down level.
You know, I'm going to go ahead and vote yes because I have a lot of confidence in Aaron, and he's done a great job before.
Perfect. Indra?
Yes.
Rick?
No.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Yes.
Victoria? Okay.
Thank you, mayor/council.
Okay, at this point, let's round this out with matters for mayor and council and staff. We're starting out with mayor and council. Have any comments or anything you'd like to add tonight? First-hand up, Rob?
Yeah, I got a few things. I think the one that might be freshest in people's minds, because it was the most recent discussed tonight, I know that, you know, Clint explained the value of the improvements out at Spalding Industrial Park, and if I remember correctly, Clint, it's kind of been something that you've been kind of pushing for, for probably five years, to basically be able to attract more business here and all that kind of stuff. And I just really need to point out on page 166 of our packet, the thing that we, the item that we just approved on the consent calendar was the grant, you know, filing the grant, and third paragraph down from the top, I just have to make the point, it says the industrial lands Subcommittee of, now these are the important words, Collaborative Economic Development Committee, CEDC, is a group of local experts and community partners interested in supporting all industrial properties, et cetera, et cetera. The Subcommittee has assembled the necessary support to satisfy the requirements for the grant application. You know, when I read this, it tells me that the CEDC and the Subcommittee of the CEDC was instrumental in creating this grant opportunity that could potentially bring us the city in $2 million. And this is the committee that the newer council members just decided to abolish last week because they didn't understand what that committee did. And when you were discussing it, we asked about, well, what about a couple of hours a month of staff time? Well, that couple of hours of staff time, supporting this committee, may actually bring us in $2 million. So I'm going to make the point that I really believe that the three committees that the newer counselors abolished last week without understanding what they did, this is a perfect example of one of the things that that committee did, is potentially get us $2 million. So basically, I think that stepping over dollar bills to pick up pennies was very foolish. We should go back and we should institute those three committees. Hopefully, we can discuss that at the next workshop, at least until you understand what they do, and this is one of the things that they do. That's one thing I just like to bring up. The other thing, and then we're going to get to one other more minor point, and that's something that I feel really, really strongly about, but the, what we did tonight also on the consent calendar when we approved the police contract... the police contract, and Indra asked one question about it, that was pretty appropriate. So, we essentially increased the police contract about 14% over two years, at 7% a year. And I'm in agreement with that, because our police were dramatically underpaid when compared to the comparators, the cities that were closest to us in population. And they are still slightly, they're not above average at this point. They're closer, as Aaron said, they're closer to what the comparators are. Now, what's going to happen in the next two or three years is that the comparators will renegotiate their contracts, they will pull ahead of us, we'll be just as far behind a few years from now, and we'll have to do the whole thing again. So, the point that I'm making is, is that, just, this is just one portion of our police budget, but overall, I believe our police budget goes up about 7% a year. Now, I will say that the police union was actually, I think, treated the city very well. They didn't extract every penny they might have from this contract negotiation, and I think that that was very reasonable of them, I think, because most of them live here, and, you know, they'd like to support their city in that way. But the fact is, while we increased the overall fee structure, which we did, that item right after, the fee structure is 3%. We did 3% increase in the fee structure. Our property taxes go up 3% a year, and we just increased the biggest contract in our city by 7%. So, I don't think that anybody should be surprised when we keep getting deeper in a hole, and we keep having less and less money for public safety, and discussions come up of how to fund that gap, because tonight we saw how that gap is created. We voted for raises that are more than double what our increase in funding is, and we just did it, okay? We just created more gap this tonight. And what the answer is there, I don't know. That's part of why we did the Public Safety Advisory Committee. Hopefully, we can somehow dig our way out from, again, what's been happening and what we did again tonight. Now, the other issue that I want to bring up, we had a lot of emails going back and forth with council and staff maybe not being clear on the closure of the timetable for the closure of the camps and so forth. There may have been a misunderstanding as to how many days and all that stuff. And to me, a matter of a couple of weeks on something like that, to me, is not a huge deal. Yes, you do want the staff to be, to take council direction seriously. But the thing that I'm most concerned with is that, I'm going to preface this by saying, anybody who's watched me in council meetings or in executive session knows that I do not necessarily take what any lawyer tells me at face value without an explanation. And sometimes, it seems like the lawyers are just covering their butt and, you know, trying to protect their client from the 10th of a percent of a chance that there's going to be a problem, some kind of legal pushback or blowback from a bad decision. Sometimes it's that, and sometimes I listen to a lawyer, and everybody knows who was at executive sessions last summer or in the last four years. I may not be Aaron Heisel, our Supreme Court lawyer's favorite counselor, because I asked him questions, and I made sure that even if it wasn't in a direction that I think he wanted to maybe take us sometimes, I made him answer questions. But the point that I'm making is, one of the things that he was extremely clear about, very, very clear, and I think Joel and Rick might remember this, and probably staff, he was extremely clear about, we'll call them resting sites, hours. And he explained why 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., or hours like that, is not advisable. And if I remember correctly, he even said there was, and I'm not sure about this part, there was settled case law to tell us why that would be a big mistake. And we had a guy last week who got up to the podium, who claimed that he had been a, some kind of employment counselor or job counselor, and he said the exact same thing. He tried to explain to council why those hours, and he implied, I believe, that it is settled case law. And yet, nonetheless, this council went ahead, and our city attorney even said, "Don't make this move until you hear from me." The council went ahead and made a move that could actually go in opposition to what is already settled law. Now, if you do that, generally, you lose right away if it ever goes to court, immediately. You don't even have a chance. And the point is, is that I would go against what a lawyer tells me if I understand it thoroughly first, and it really makes no sense to me. But first, I've got to understand it. I have to listen to them to understand it. This council chose not to listen to our attorney, not even, not to take the, it's not a question of not taking his advice, it's not even allowing him the opportunity to explain to us why he suggested that, okay? Essentially, the council put the 39,000 people that we represent in legal jeopardy by not even listening to the attorney. It seems like the only attorney or the only legal counsel this council got last week might have been from the firm of Yonker and Yonker, quite frankly. And, you know, he's no longer practicing in municipal law in Grants Pass. So, we might want to actually listen to our city attorney. The ironic thing to me is, given his hourly rate and the time that he was here last week and his travel time, we probably paid him $1,000 bucks to blow him off. And, you know, this council seems to be interested in, you know, smart, money management. We paid the attorney probably $1,000 bucks and blew him off. We didn't even let, we didn't even get to hear what he had to say. Now, once we hear, once he hears, to me, that we actually basically completely, completely gave up our fiduciary responsibility to the public, to actually look out for their best interests, both monetarily and from a legal perspective, by not even listening to the attorney. Not disagreeing, again, I've disagreed with many attorneys, but I would, and with my own money and my own, in my own finances and my own life, I do that sometimes, and the way I look at the public money, I try to look at it the same way. Would I spend the public money any more freely than I would spend my own? And the answer to that is generally no, okay? I would always listen to my attorney and then make the decision. We need to bring the city attorney back at whatever time it is most, at the fastest possible time, to bring him back either at a workshop or an executive session, so this council can actually hear the potential pitfalls of what action they took last week, because I don't believe a single one of, if I asked every single one of you, what are the potential pitfalls of those hours and why, there's not a single one of you that could, that could explain it to me, or could explain it to the public. And yet, we're going to be on the hook for that decision. So, we need to actually bring the attorney back and hear what he has to say before we decide if we, if we agree with the advice or don't agree with the advice, because right now, we're basically ignorant, and we're putting the public at risk. So, that's all. I guess of the important matters tonight, that's all I have to say.
Victoria?
I specifically remember Councilman Yonker telling us that he had sought other legal advice. It was one of the reasons I chose to go along with the motion. And so, it was not made willy-nilly without any other information that was given right here on the dais. So, I think that, I can only speak for myself, but I surmise that other counselors had researched and understood the decision that they were making, and so I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Anybody else? Eric?
Thank you, Rob, for that long-winded explanation. Really appreciate you bringing that to the table. With your expertise, can you please explain exactly what the Collaborative Economic Development Committee did specifically for the, for the Spalding Industrial Park? I mean, what exactly is it that they did? If you can, I mean, if you're saying that we made this big mistake, and that you're explaining that they, it was very necessary, can you please explain to us specifically what it is that they helped? Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to interject here real quick. You were named, you will get your time to say, but at this time, the spirit of what this Matters for Mayor and Council is, is to bring up new items, to have discussions on what the public comment was, to have some questions that can go back to staff for future stuff. I don't want this to devolve into a bicker match. This is still a recorded item. This is still on public television, so I'm just going to employ you to keep that in your mind. We can have more candid conversations, or you guys can have more one-on-one candid conversations. This is a time for you to, I'm taking it in the spirit, this is a time for you to ask questions, to address the public, to address items that we have coming up in the future, to address things that you've gotten from your constituents, from the time that you've been in the public, from the last meeting. I am just not really comfortable with how this is kind of unfolding, but if you guys want to continue with it, I've said my piece with it. So, with that, Rob, you were mentioned, so you can respond.
Well, and I appreciate your perspective, Clint. When it's Matters for Mayor and Council, and I'm just pointing out why I feel we need to revisit, or at least allow or schedule workshop time for the city attorney. That's totally appropriate for Matters for Mayor and Council, no matter how you define it, okay? Hopefully, we, you and I agree on that. With regards to the answer to Eric's question, I appreciate him answering or asking that question. The time to ask it would have been last week of staff and also of the chairperson of the CEDC who was here. And if you'd like to ask them, or you'd like to ask the staff, that would be the appropriate person to answer that. And, but that's not going to happen unless you want to reconsider that.
I'm going to answer, I'm going to add to this one conversation a little bit. And I don't want to devolve this again, but you did mention, Rob, that in this literature on page 166, that it stated, it stated that this actually, this committee was part of the requirements for the grant. It's not how this reads, it reads that they were actually advising them, but the committee actually doesn't have any participation or, within the grant. They are a recommendation board of experts within the community. The statement is, is that the Subcommittee has assembled the necessary support to satisfy the requirements of the grant application. Has nothing to say that that committee was part of the requirements for the grant. So, I just wanted to clarify that. They are an advisory committee, and I would say that I was kind of in support of dissolving that committee, because the city Grants Pass has its own economic development department, so it kind of feels like it was a little bit of double duty on that aspect. And it was just a clarification. Joel, you had one thing to add?
Well, this is a different subject. Is that okay? So, the Urban Tree Committee has put together, in their own time and initiative, an urban tree management plan, and the final edits are being completed. Didn't cost the city a dime, and that'll be coming before the council, and trees are an important part of our infrastructure. We generally don't think of it that way, but it makes the city much more livable, has economic benefits, and so I just wanted to let you know that that's happening.
Perfect. Kathleen?
Yeah, I wanted to bring up a new topic, too. Tonight, we heard that there was a street in town that needed some signs, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that there are some streets that definitely need some attention with signage and what's allowed and what's not allowed.
There was a question in there, wasn't there? Or just a statement?
Not so much a question, just confirmation from a conversation that I'd had earlier about a need for more signs in the city, specifically--
I was just clarifying--
It was Fairview, Fairview Drive.
Victoria?
I would like to bring up, well, ask about the status. It didn't go anywhere at our last meeting, but I would like to ask about the status of, trying to say this without, well, of the hiring the city attorney. Can you address that, anything about that, if you can, I understand?
The normal process is for us to go through and try to find a quality candidate that will fill that needs of city attorney. Once that candidate is found, we go through and initiate a background on them, and that's a very detailed process that takes quite a few weeks. We are finalizing some details on that, and once that comes through, and if it is clean, then what we do is we forward it to council on the consent calendar item for your approval of the hiring of the city attorney. We, I believe, we would have the opportunity to do that at the first scheduled council meeting in February, under the consent agenda. And we'll provide information on that, on that candidate in advance of that.
Indra?
I just want to say, I know it's been a rough couple of weeks for our police chief, fire chief, staff, I mean, adjusting to change, and there's big change. And so, I just want you to know, I appreciate all that you're doing, and I think I could speak for everyone to say we appreciate you, and we support you fully.
Eric?
I second that.
Very good, very good. Hey, I might also say one thing, and I'm going to hand it over to staff, is, yes, we are starting a new chapter in this, our lives, as well as the city's book of tales here. I appreciate the senior council members. I personally have served with a couple of them. I look for you guys for advice and for your wisdom from your experience of being up here for many years. I look for the talent and the inspiration and the passion from the new people coming in. Each one of you guys have, brings to the table a very extensive experience in your own right, from the business, from drug addiction, from the military. We have one of the best military guys here, as well as the school district, and this is our debate queen here. I just hope that we all can get through these bumps and trials and tribulations at the beginning, and we can actually work for the betterment of the city. I think nobody can deny that everybody that sits up here has passion for the city. So, I applaud you guys all, and hopefully, what we go forward with, with great decorum and set a great example for our public. With that, I'm going to hand it over to the staff. If staff have anything to add?
We're good this evening, Mayor.
That's not good enough. I want something from everyone. Your assignment was five minutes each. Just kidding. I appreciate that. With that, we're kind of done. We don't have any executive session on the list here, so I would be looking for a motion to adjourn. Or, we're getting time here. Do you guys want to go into a motion to extend for another three hours?
I motion to adjourn.
Victoria, motion to adjourn--
A second--
Kathleen has a second. Everybody say aye.
Aye.
Perfect, we're done.